Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. So I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to add to the agenda? Does the agenda look okay? If the agenda looks okay, um, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. Danny. Uh, seconder, Councilor Sonier. All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Contrary minded, nay. Okay, motion carried, thank you. Next. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anybody that has a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda? If so, you can declare that conflict now. You can declare it later on as well if necessary, but. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. Um, we have had regrets sent from Councilor Dontrimal, just so that everybody knows. So number three, we have the adoption of the minutes. So the regular council meeting minutes from January 12th of 2021. Can we have somebody move those minutes? Councilor Bork, can we have a seconder? Councilor Saret, thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Good, contrary minded. Motion carried. All right, so next we have business arising from the minutes. So our one thing for business arising from the minutes is sidewalks. Um, you will notice that there were four attachments. So this came about from the last meeting, our regular council meeting, when Councilor Saret had brought up a notice of motion. He had raised the question asking if staff could possibly find figures on potential locations in his district for, for sidewalks. So he kind of wanted some more information about that. Possibly some pricing information. So we have had four different, there are four attachments on the agenda. So one is the active transportation plan. Then there was the meeting minutes from various council minutes where the topic of, of sidewalks has come up. There is also the winter clearing standard policy. And there was also the asset, asset management policy. So all of this to say, and especially if you look at the second attachment, sidewalks is something that's come up several times over the years, even the years that I've been on council. Um, typically too, I find that it comes up after an election. Cause I think when we're campaigning, it's one of the things we hear about. Why don't we have sidewalks? Cause it's one of those things that people in our districts see, right? And they, they ask about sidewalks and they ask about streetlights. So I, I wasn't quite sure how to, how to handle this one on the agenda tonight. And I, I've had a conversation with our C A O and talked about, we have to kind of think about, so sidewalks, when we're talking about pricing, Councilor Saret. We know, we've been kind of given a quote of a potential of a million dollars for a kilometer. That's kind of the figure that we've heard over the years. But we've, so every time it seems like we've heard that, we've kind of let it drop. So I guess when I think about this topic, I think about how do we make sure that we continue to have this conversation? And if it's, is it something we really want to sink money into? Is it something that other counselors are, are thinking about and wanting to have sidewalks? Because if we do, we really have to think about long-term planning and putting that possibly on our five, on our long-term capital plan. As of right now, it's not on our long-term capital plan. Because if we, let's say even, um, if, if the potential figure came out to 500,000, let's say, cause let's say we did a cheaper version of sidewalks. We, we have to kind of think about the cost that that would potentially be for more than one district. And that could be millions of dollars and that's a big chunk of change. And that's something that we would put on our five-year capital plan. So if we do that, um, we could decide at our priority setting, whether or not it's something that we want to put on our plan. And if we do, the other question I had about sidewalks is, how do we determine who gets sidewalks? How do we determine where the sidewalk goes? How do we determine who gets them first, second? Um, because there's not only the cost of the sidewalks, but there's the, the cost of the maintenance. There's the, the cost of the upkeep. There is, um, you know, plowing the sidewalks. All of those types of things that, that come along with the sidewalks. We have a policy for, um, streetlights, but we don't have any policies for sidewalks. So if we're going to seriously look at this, I think we kind of have to head into two directions. I think we have to think about putting it on our priorities for our priority sessions so that we can talk about it, so that we can think about putting it on our five-year capital plan. And if we decide that sidewalks is something that we really want to sink some money into, we have to think about a policy that's going to be equitable for all of our, all of our areas, all of our districts. Where do they go? How do we determine where they go? Is it in cases of safety? All of those questions. So those are the questions that I've kind of had. And those are the things that I've been kind of thinking about when it comes to sidewalks. So I'm going to open up the floor to discussion if anybody has anything they would like to add. Um, Councilor Sonier. Unmute.
Always forget that. Uh, I, I realized that every community wants sidewalks. And, and I, I'm not trying to compete in any shape or form, but I, I just, I just think the stats, especially the status you've written, the links you've received, uh, basically speak for themselves. Uh, when it comes to community or volume of traffic in communities, Plymouth is up there number one with everybody else. There's only, I think, Publico that might be a little more or par. Even Wedgeport is less than, than, uh, Plymouth, because the traffic from, from Wedgeport funnels down all through. So we get the cumulative traffic from all of Wedgeport, Upper Wedgeport, Lower Wedgeport, and of course, uh, Plymouth. And, and with that, we get all the, the truck traffic from all the fish plants and the lobsters and all that stuff. We also get school buses from two schools that come in, in our area and stop at the same place. We get the gravel trucks from the, uh, the Plymouth pits. It's very, very heavy traffic and man, I, I, like everybody else, it goes by here zooming at times. The, the, uh, one bus stop, the bus driver told the, uh, the, the residents not to dare let their kids cross the road, uh, by themselves. He said, this is by far, he said, the worst place that he stops is right here in Plymouth for traffic. And, and cars have zoomed by the bus without stopping. We, we here in Plymouth believe that, that it's a need, it's not a want. And, and that with the, the magnitude of the traffic. And if you compare that to any other village, I can't see how Plymouth can be put on the bag burner anymore. I, I really would like to further this discussion and bring it to the priority list like, like Nicole mentioned. And, and maybe have more discussion on it. I, I know it's expensive, but I, I think the safety of our kids are, are, are here. We, we don't want a nature trail that people talk about, about walking elsewhere and using a nature trail. We, we, uh, believe that the people walking back and, and forth to the schools, some of them, the mothers drive them to the school, they just will not take that chance to let them walk. It's heavy traffic. Uh, if you guys want to come and have a look at it, you, you can, but the stats speak for themselves. You really don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sonier. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Councilor Saret.
Uh, thank you, W. Warden. Uh, my, my points will be not to who needs it, who wants it first, who has the most traffic or who has the less traffic. What I'd like to see here is, uh, that we look at a policy on sidewalks. I really believe that the municipality, this has been mulled over, uh, for many years. I've been here 12 years. I'm sure Councilor Donaldson has heard it, he's been here the longest, he's heard a lot about it. But I think what we do need, we do need a policy. Uh, when I looked, I read the attachments. You know, I remember Kathy bringing it up for each Publico. Obviously Ted and, and his group when they came to the municipality, they brought it up. Uh, certainly great points. Uh, another question, active transportation, I think is so, so important. You'll see that in many communities. And I've gone and surveyed this in the last month since we've had our last meeting, as of a month. I went and looked in Publico, I went and looked in Wedgeport. Not so much in Tuskegee, but I'll say Publico and Wedgeport, a lot of people are walking. I found a lot of people are walking in the, on, on sidewalks. And I really do believe it adds to the health of our community, adds to, uh, uh, people maybe going out for their mental health. You know, uh, doing that kind of thing will help. I think we need a policy to say whether it's going to be to have sidewalks or not. So be it, we are nine, we're nine on this. And, and, and my belief is that, uh, you know, a policy should, should go out. Uh, do we need to know what it costs per, per kilometer? Sure, I, I'm positive that the, uh, that the cost is going to be a huge factor. But with a policy stating that, uh, we are or are not, and the reasons why we should or we should not, we need to make a study, we need to look at other municipalities, what their, their policies are. And I think staff, if staff could have a look at that, bring us that information. And, and then maybe, and, and Debbie Warden, I think that's a great point, talking about, uh, that strategic plan. I, I, I think that's a, a great, we can all have our input in there. And, and so let, let's have a deep discussion. Let's look at it, let's get staff to bring us some numbers. So, you know, whatever communities are doing, municipalities and, and make a decision from there. And, you know, put this to bed and yes or no, at the end of the day, once we have information. And that's, that's my point anyhow. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Councilor Saret? I'm just wondering, do you think we should have, like, for me, the question was, do we, do we first decide whether we put it on our capital plan or not? And then develop a policy? Or do you feel like we should develop a policy regardless?
Uh, myself, I, I think with the strategic plan, uh, when we look at the strategic plan, if we had, we had some ideas from what other municipal units are doing, how they, uh, how they approach it, what's the criteria? You know, uh, I remember once we were talking about sidewalks. And, uh, our C A O said, you know, one, one way it could be to passing by each house or people's lot of land, that's it. Let's say you did a kilometer in Plymouth. And, and Ted disdues me for putting there, but just, just for saying. And if you pass by each house that you pass and buy, and every lot, everybody paid $300 a year for like 10 years to help pay for that. That, 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 we, why don't we look at something like that? You know, maybe it's no good, maybe we'll throw it away, but that's fine. At least let's have a discussion and see what some of the, what some of the other units are doing. Where we fit it, hey, maybe, maybe it won't work. And but maybe we can put this baby to bed, you know? Uh, that's my feeling anyhow.
I agree, I agree. I feel like we have to have some criteria somewhere. Um, Warden, Muse?
I agree that we need a policy. And I think we need a policy before we even put it on our, on our, um, uh, priority list. Because without, without a policy, if we put it in our priority list, it means that we're going to be, we're going to be looking at doing it. But, but I think we need the policy first to know what is this going to entail? What, what, what are we looking at here for? I mean, I know some municipalities have sidewalks. Uh, municipalities of Yarmouth, for instance. They have a lot of sidewalks. And I don't know if, what their policy is on that or how to decide where it goes. But, but, uh, one thing about sidewalks, I find, and, and yes, the, the active, uh, the, the, not active transportation, yeah, maybe, anyway, the plan that we have is, uh, if, if you're going to make sidewalks for that purpose, they have to lead somewheres. If you only make a sidewalk a kilometer long or whatever, and what happens is people who walk, walk more than that. And they're either going to have to go back and forth unless it, it connects an area where they can keep walking. And I think that is the important part. So that, so that it, it's a way to get from, from an actual trail or an actual back road where there's no traffic or there's that type of thing that, that we have to look at. Because if you're only going to walk half a kilometer or whatever, people are not going to use that just for that. Right? If it goes nowhere, you can't have a sidewalk that goes nowhere. So I think we need a policy. Uh, if we start building sidewalks without, what's going to happen is, once you build one, watch out, you're going to have requests. And why can they get it and I can't, right? And we're going to have to, to be able to explain how we decided on that. And that's where a policy would come in handy. So I don't think myself that we're ready to put that on our, on our priority list right now. But it's definitely something that we have to look at. And, and, and we have to realize as well that, that gas tax can be used for that. But when you're looking at a million dollars for, for a kilometer of sidewalk, which is probably is, and, and, and that, that price, we've, we've been saying that for how many years? I don't know what it costs now to do a sidewalk. I mean, this is, this is something that we, that we, we, we had few years ago with that price. And, and, and it might be more now. So anyway, the, the, the idea of maybe having, uh, uh, well, I can't, I'm, I'm going to say user pay, but it, it's not user pay, I guess. I mean, even if it's front of my house and I have to pay extra, it doesn't mean that, that someone who doesn't, that it doesn't go in front of theirs, it's going to, is not going to use a sidewalk. But I think maybe that's a way to look at that though, to, to say, if a, if a community wants a sidewalk, that's going to be used by the community, maybe the community should pay for the, for, 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 for that as well. So anyway, that's just, just my view on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Dayton?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, well, just to touch base on what Ward Muse said, as far as people aren't going to walk on the sidewalk if they're not leading anywhere. Uh, I tend to disagree with that. And the reason I say that is, uh, morning, noon and night here, there's people walking on the sidewalk in Publico. And they'll walk the sidewalk two and three times and get in their cars and drive home or whatever. So it is a meeting place for these people. I, I know we were all excited a couple of years ago when we had the active transportation plan done for, for the municipality of Argyle. And one of the things in it was an extension of the sidewalk in Publico. Uh, they were looking at a, um, extension leaning, leaning, leading from the seniors home in Midwest, or in, yeah, Midwest Publico here. And that there would connect the people that lives in these apartments. It would connect them with just some of the places I'm going to mention, the bank, the credit union, the pharmacy, a senior center, a community hall, a post office, uh, funeral home and a restaurant. And some of these people that live in this home have no cars or, uh, mobility issues. And they could even go along the sidewalk here in Midwest Publico right now if they could get to it with a, uh, with an electric chair. And that, so, um, I think it's something we definitely should look at. And I honestly feel as though, and again, I'm not, uh, saying for Publico, Publico, but the only thing is, if we're going to have these studies, like we did this active transportation, and we're not going to follow up on some of the guide, some of the guides that was given to us or whatever. Um, I, I questioned why we have some of these studies sometimes if we don't look at, at following up on the information that was given to us. So, yeah, I, I think we, it, it would definitely be something worth looking into. And I believe that the extension to the sidewalk, uh, for the active transportation plan down here, they were looking at, I believe, 2025 or 2026. I'm, I'm not sure, don't quote me on that, but I believe that's what was in the, in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on it? Uh, Councilor?
Yeah, just a quick, uh, um, thing about what I said about going nowhere. Uh, what I mean is if you're going to build a sidewalk that's too short, Publico is fairly long. You know, they, they, a lot of people walk and Wedgeport is fairly long. Uh, what I meant by that is, I, I know that one is used and it, it does go nowhere. It stops, you know, at the church and whatever, but, but a lot of people use it. No, why?
It, it, it don't stop at the church, it goes quite a ways past the church.
Okay, yeah.
The church would be pretty well halfway. But I hate to think, Mr. Warden, of you saying, you know, it go nowhere when you're in Midwest Publico, like we're on the edge of everywhere.
No, 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 that's not what I mean.
I'm just kidding.
Councilor Donaldson, did you want to speak on this issue?
Yeah, well, I mean, this comes up every, after every election, this one comes up.
Yeah.
I mean, people talk to us and like, there's a lot of people in Lower Argyle want, want sidewalks. But I have an idea, once they find out what the user rate would be in front of their property, as they do, I believe in Claire. Um, I don't think a whole lot will want sidewalks. I said, you can have anything you want, if you're willing to pay the taxes for it. You can have a streetlight on every pole. You can have sidewalks every kilometer of the municipality. But do you want to pay the taxes to put it in? So I mean, you got to be realistic about it. I mean, sidewalks, I always thought sidewalks was something that they put in to get from one business to one, to another business or an institute, somewhere where there was a commercial need for them. I didn't think sidewalks' main purpose was for a walking trail. You want walking trails, put one in, like they gotten, uh, over in Rockville, like a gravel walking trail runs alongside the highway. But a full-fledged sidewalk, I didn't think their main purpose was for walking. I mean, you build walking trails for walking, not million-dollar kilometer walking trails. So I mean, there's got to be a, there's got to be a legitimate reason if schools come to mine, uh, is a legitimate place to put them. Places where there's a fair amount of business and population. But just to put a kilometer of sidewalk somewhere, just because somebody else has got sidewalks. To me, yeah, I want them, I'd love to have them, but there's, there's places that probably deserve them. And there's places that we'll probably never get them. But at what cost do we charge people in South Clinton for sidewalks in Wedgeport or Publico? I mean, how, it's like, uh, got to be an area rate put on for people that want them in, in their area. The, the only way I can see it working.
Right. Thanks. Thank you.
I don't know what percentage of the people on that stretch would have to approve. You'll never get 100%. So you'd have to set a standard of some type in this policy of how many are going to, uh, buy into it, right?
Uh huh.
So, yeah, I mean, there's, we've got a long ways to go before we lay, lay any sidewalks and getting figures and numbers. And, and I'll bet you, I'm not, I'm just a guess, but a million dollars a kilometer, we're talking five years ago, at least when we was talking about this.
Yeah, you're right.
So, it, and you know, nothing's going down in Grace.
That's right, for sure.
Anyhow, the, uh, staff will bring us back numbers and scenarios on how other municipalities do it. But I mean, all nine of us can put, make a motion, say, I want to put sidewalks from here to here to show our people we're interested in building sidewalks. We know it's going to get knocked down and voted out because we got no policy. We got, we don't have the money to do it. But, uh, yeah, I don't know how to, like, I don't think that's the right way to do it. So, uh, this might, I don't know how many times I've talked about this in 30 years, but it's just always the same.
That's why we value your experience. Thank you, Councilor Donaldson. Uh, Councilor Bork?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm being asked quite often about sidewalks. And I do explain to them how much they do cost. And I recently explained that, um, we have our water utility that has to be replaced. So that's a priority for our area. But, um, sidewalks would be great in my, in my district because we have an 80-kilometer zone. We have quite a few fish plants. I have, uh, tractor trailers going by at 80. It's, and we only have a small side of the road, side shoulders. And some, most of them are not in good condition. Yeah, we have our rails to trails, but those are, always have to be fixed. They're not always up to par either to walk. And, um, as I said before, uh, if you look at the, the documents that we had in 2013, it's the same thing. It's, it's, it's a concern about accidents could, could happen. I mean, I, I walk far as here, far as Kamau Seaford, that's not far. And, and you, you almost have to jump in the ditch sometimes to, just to walk on the side of the road. So, and there was other, uh, options too for us, like on the shoulders, like to, it's not even the, not real sidewalks, but extending the shoulders, uh, widened shoulders with compact, um, some kind of a compact thing. I, I'm not quite sure what it was. Anyway, it was to, um, some met, could have been an option that we could have. So, um, I'm for, I'm for something to be done on, in my district. So it's been hollering since I've been here too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Councilor Sonier?
Yeah, I, I, I respect everybody's opinion. And I understand that this comes up every election. And from what I hear, it's been coming up every election for the past 30 years. So that tells me that people want sidewalks and that's who we represent. I understand the cost. I, I understand that, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a big deal. But I, I think we should look into it and at the very least, come up with a common sense reason why or why not? So that we can at the very least explain to our people why we're doing it here or not doing it at all. Uh, in Plymouth, talking about, uh, to Kathy's point, it was recommended by the study when they paved the road in Plymouth that they shouldn't widen the shoulder. That's kind of telling for me. It says that you widen the shoulder, not for the cars, it's for the people walking. There's, there's a need here. But anyhow, all I'm saying, we need, we need to have a good discussion. We need to make it plain to the, to the people we represent, why or why not? And make it understand. So if this has been going on for 30, 40 years, instead of keep pushing the ball down the road, you're kicking the can down the road, let's, let's deal with it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Saret?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we get staff to, uh, look into, uh, what other, uh, units are doing for sidewalks, what some of the criteria are. And to bring it back to us, uh, within the next, uh, next month, I don't know if C A O thinks it's too short, if we say next two months. If that's what he would, if that would be better for staff. And to bring you some options of to look at and to, so, so to be able to formulate a policy to, to either do it, not do it, or, or criteria, if we were going to do it. Uh, I'd like to make that motion.
Can I ask a question of clarity on your motion? Are we asking, are we asking for a motion to establish a policy? Or are you looking mainly for information before establishing a policy?
Looking for in, information before establishing policy because, uh, we need that info before we can start formalizing, uh, stuff together to make a policy.
Thank you for that. Can I have a second around that motion? Uh, Councilor Bork? Or any other? Anybody else want to speak on it? Councilor Donaldson?
Yeah, I just wanted, like I had my hand up saying Tom Giede. So I just wanted to make a comment before we go to the motion. I'd clarify history here, uh, talking to 30 years ago. I believe Alan will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was 1987 when the sidewalks were built in Publico and Wedgeport with 87 cent dollars. The municipality only had to pay 13 cents on the dollar. It was a provincial program that was around at that time. So since 1987, those communities have had, had sidewalks. So what I mean, every election since then, people don't know the details, right? You just know the sidewalks there. So it's been the question every time, well, why can't, it's been a long time. Why aren't you doing more sidewalks? Why aren't more places getting sidewalks? Why aren't I getting sidewalks? But I mean, we would probably be able to, kilometer after kilometer for 13 cent dollars if we could get them, but they're not out there no more. That's, it was a one-time deal. And I believe it was Neil LeBong, it hadn't been in power that long. And it was something he come up, got the funding for. And so that's the history why the sidewalks come up every four years stronger than the three years in between.
Thanks for that. Thank you for that information. Uh, C A O, Muse?
So on the question of the, or on the, on the motion itself, uh, that work is not going to be an issue at all, Councilor Saret. Uh, you know, I've already, uh, while you were talking, sent some email to some of our colleagues to see if they have policies. Not sure if there's as many policies as I thought there would be. Um, on the motion, how I interpret the motion would be that. the reason why you're asking for that information is to establish if there's other criteria, like what other criteria is out there in terms of like making a decision. So um, they may or may not have a policy to support that. So I'm interpreting your motion to say, to, 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 to be interested in understanding how other people make the decision for sidewalks or no sidewalks. So um, so that's, that's, so, so the result may not be as many policies as you may um, anticipate, but certainly uh, there may be criteria that we, we will learn from other units. And Counselor Donaldson is correct, the old, uh, there's never been a sidewalk in Argyle constructed without somebody else paying for a portion of it. Um, and at that point, it was provincial, it was at least eighty cent dollars, if not more. And uh, only recently did the federal gas tax become eligible for this kind of, of project. So in the past, when counselors were discussing this, they knew the only place they could get money from was through the taxpayer or through your reserve. The federal gas tax does offer another layer, but that has been only in the last maybe three or four years. So that's just to make sure that the, the history is, is understood as well. So I, I'm hoping that, that my interpretation of that motion is consistent with what you're looking for.
I just have one more comment. If, it was mentioned that maybe we could use a user pay. I'm quite willing to spend three hundred dollars a year for ten years, but I'm sure there are people on fixed income that could not do that. So I'm, I'm, I'm directing my question to Alan. Uh, in your, in your, in putting this together, would you consider user pay? And if you did, would you consider fixed income people?
Uh, I, I'd, I'd say as part of the criteria, one of the key criterion would be who pays. And uh, and so I think that a policy would establish exactly how that would work. And you're right to raise those that are on fixed income. We already have a fixed income policy that gives exemptions for those that are of a low income. So I suspect one of the ways that you could do this in more than one way, you could, you could do a specific criteria on, on sidewalk user fees, for instance. Uh, or you could, you could bolster your existing uh, bylaw exemption to consider a rebate under that section uh, for that particular purpose. So you could do it either, there's two policy avenues that you can do for those with fixed income. Um, the criteria, just to add to that, would, would probably include how we would invest gas tax. So um, and, and it may, you know, the criteria could also be, just to, to make a final point, is uh, is that in, in other municipalities, they've just made a decision to increase the tax rate across the board and said, every community is going to have a benefit here. So that is also a possibility. The, the user fees that we've seen in the past are typically focused on those that have a sidewalk running past their property. But there are many other people that benefit from that service. And perhaps some would argue that some people may not like the attention it draws to their property either, right? So there's, there's a lot of differing uh, views. Um, the criteria, just as a final point, should probably include how communities are able to apply for a sidewalk. And so that, you know, oftentimes you might hear certain el- aspects of the, of cer- certain community members looking for that. But then there might be others that may be opposed for whatever reason. So I think in the end, a policy should address that in, in one way, shape or form. So yeah, funding certainly will be part of the criteria to examine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Digtin?
Uh, thank you. Just going to keep it short. And I know um, our C O never misses funding when there's some available sometimes for, for different projects out there. Uh, the only thing, now that it was mentioned in the active transportation plan uh, as far as possible extension to the sidewalk here in Pumniko. Um, maybe, you know, some dollars could come up and maybe we could have a meeting, you know, for a rate payers meeting down here, whatever, and see what the people think of it and go from there. And then it would be up to the people to decide as to whether or not they'd want it or not. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this?
Question.
Question's been called. So there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of Counselor Saret's motion, raise your hand. Thank you. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carried. Great discussion. Thank you, everybody, for, for all your participation. Um, next, we have the quarterly financial statement. Financial statements are not my strength. I'm not going to pretend that they are. So I will hand this over, and this is a big one. So I'm going to hand this over to C O Muse.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Um, so there are three fairly large attachments. This is a lot more information than we typically have. And one of the commitments we made was on the quarterlies, in particular in December, we would ex- expand the information provided to you to include uh, activity in the reserves. You are, as a council, accustomed to seeing the operating fund because that's where most of the action is. Um, so we decided that once a quarter, we would give you a little bit more information on the reserves. Um, so I want to, I want to uh, point out that there is a qualitative description. And that is the, is the document that I will be following at first. And then if there's any additional questions around the detail, I'm happy to answer them. So I tried to do the qualitative piece as short and sweet as possible. Uh, there are fiscal highlights on page two, which identify some of the high level uh, information that you might be interested in. So for instance, the operational surplus to December thirty first appears to be about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. That excludes your safe restart funding that came from the government of two hundred and forty one thousand. I'm rounding these numbers just for simplicity. The reason why we are showing this level of surplus, there are major savings in solid waste. Uh, uh, things that, that we could not do due to COVID. Uh, for instance, like uh, the um, the cleanup of ditches, for instance, which was, which was a big project every year. We didn't do that this year, but we budgeted that we would. Um, uh, major revenue increases in D transfer tax. I'm sure you've heard that before. Uh, we really estimated that there wouldn't be a lot of activity in the D transfer tax during COVID. And lo and behold, the, the polar opposite happened with a lot of people looking to either move into the community or, or make some deci- different decisions around that. So that phenomenon is Nova Scotia wide. So it's not just Argyle, uh, though we would like to take credit because it's awesome to live here. Uh, it is, it is across Nova Scotia that we're seeing this phenomenon. Um, there are, uh, in terms of cash flow, uh, we have strong cash flow right now. We have nine point eight six nine million in bank and reserves. Now, that number seems ridiculously high, so I'm going to explain a little bit of why it's in that position and, and what's going to change very quickly in the next little, little while. So that does not include any amounts payable. So if there's anything payable in the year, this is, this includes cash in the bank at December thirty one. It also includes the one point six million dollars we received from the province for the safe restart loan, where saw that we, we, uh, we, we did not need nearly that amount. So while there might be nine point eight six nine in, in bank and reserves, there's also a, an obligation to repay that one point six four million dollar loan. Um, also, uh, the um, that cash flow will be impacted by, will continuously be impacted by the um, by the administrative building project. So the, you know, the, the invoices that come in, you know, can, can be a little over a hundred thousand a month and can be close to two hundred thousand a month. Now, obviously, that's not going to go forever and it'll hit uh, a substantial completion in the month of May. Then after that, we will be receiving loan proceeds which will restore some of this money. So keep in mind, the nine point eight includes all reserves, operations, operating reserve, capital and gas tax. Um, so it's a big number right now, but, but it, it will fluctuate and will come down. The capital projects update is uh, sorry, before I move on, I would just say that tax collection uh, this year compared to last year is almost identical. So where we thought COVID might impact our collection, it, it has not. What has impacted our collection is the amount of water loans that we have issued. That has had a tremendous uh, impact on, on our uh, cash flow, though, though I would, I would say that that's not an issue uh, right now. And what you also know is that the water lending loans are being paid and the interest uh, that we charge. Um, it exceeds the interest that would other, that we would otherwise have earned in our accounts by a small amount, but an, an amount nonetheless. Um, in terms of the capital projects update, we've invested two point three seven two in capital this year, two point three seven two million, of which about one point eight and change is our admin building. The gas tax has not been allocated to that project yet. Um, we're going to wait until the end of the year and determine how many costs go to the left and how many costs remain in the reserves to the right. Um, so we know that federal gas tax is eligible for a portion of this project. Uh, but in terms of actually allocating it, there's a function there that requires um, requires us to do before the end of the project, but not necessarily right now. So in terms of the operating fund, the, there, we have some details around how we got to our variances. Um, I'm not going to go in all sorts of details. You've had a chance to read this. Basically, uh, some of it is repetitive. D transfer taxes is driving revenue up. And um, as a consequence, where we budgeted to use operating reserves this year, that's going to be zero this year. So it's like what we thought and what happened are two very significantly different things. Uh, also, uh, the, under the expenditures, there have been savings. We've listed them. Uh, recreation and archives, uh, solid waste, sewer and water, protective services, fire, Y M C operating grant. So in a lot of those instances, you know, training couldn't happen. So for fire, that was the reason why we have some savings. You know, savings in, in, in expenditures, uh, but, but also a significant reduction in service because we weren't able to establish that training. Uh, the same, same goes with the Y M C operating grant. You know, the Y M C is closed uh, currently. So we had an, an expectation that a grant would go to the Y M C at the beginning of the year. Obviously, with COVID, that changed significantly. Now, there could be before the end of year, an allocation towards a bridge um, service. Uh, when that happens is, is still unsure. I will say that you, as a council, approved an overpayment in the budget, the major one being the organization, the Congregé Maudia Lacadien, uh, twenty twenty four organization. We had budgeted a really known low number there uh, for contribution this year. We, we um, and, and what we were thankfully uh, seeing was that they were ahead of schedule. So they asked us for more money because they're now up and running. Um, we are projecting a year end surplus and we are projecting that that amount will exceed the current shown so, surplus of two oh seven. And the reason why I'm confident in saying that is that I expect to see safe restart funds shown as revenue. Maybe not the whole amount, but a section of it. Um, some of the things that we budgeted as being COVID costs, such as increased Mariner Center costs and other related COVID costs, um, will be covered with this fund. We're, we're expecting that this fund will cover that. So what that means is where we thought the taxpayer would. In fact, the safe funding, which came from the province, which came from the federal government, will be covering for those additional costs. So thereby allowing us to show a surplus for that because somebody else paid the bill essentially. Uh, we still don't know what the accountability framework will look like. I am part of a group that will be looking at that. And we have a meeting this week to talk about it, but it is the provincial government that will be establishing the um, the accountability around h- how we use that fund. Um, there'll be rules associated with that. There is a section on tax collection that shows the detail of both the, the amount collected each month as well as the uh, comparison of balances owing at the end of December. And the notable difference is the water lending balance. Uh, last year, at the end of December, was at a hundred and forty thousand and change. This year, it's at three hundred and twenty thousand. So that's a service we provided to our residents and so, and we were committed to that. But that's, that's the difference. Um, every other balance is, is either below last year or comparable in terms of collection. So i- i- in that section, which is page four, where you see taxes receivable comparison, that is the remaining amount receivable from last year's, from, 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 from prior years um, tax billing. You'll see a prepaid tax. Some people pay monthly and as a consequence, they're paying ahead of their bill. And so as a consequence, what you see is the more people that we get on a plan, the, the larger that number becomes. A lot of our residents love the monthly option. It's, it's fire and forget. It, it's not a big bill all at once. Um, nobody likes a big bill, uh, but, but a lot of people are choosing to pay it this way. And I, I find that uh, this and the insurance bill are very much a, a common uh, monthly payment as opposed to paying it all at once. Uh, there are some comments on the operating reserves. Really not a lot has happened outside of the ordinary, other than because we had excess funds in our operating fund, we transferred money from the fund to the reserve. Um, the operating fund actually owed the reserve quite a bit of money. And it was due to a change in accounting policy that told us that we had to pull all of our funds into the reserve when we had surpluses. So in the year that it changed, we created a transfer of funds, but the funds didn't actually move. Okay, it was an accounting function, but the funds didn't move because we needed the funds still in the operating fund for cash flow purposes. Uh, probably by the end of March thirty one, we will adjust that number to what we think it should be. Okay? Um, it's always been a little too high, uh, the, the inter fund balance. Finally, capital reserve. I think I've probably explained most of what has happened. I will like to talk about the projects we expect are, are, are uh, on time and those that might be delayed slightly, be, either because of COVID or other complications. So um, the, the, the biggest one we have is the admin building that is on schedule. Um, my hat goes off to Garian Construction and their team. Um, they have been absolutely wonderful to work with. And um, so it's, it is progressing. Um, and there's always com- there's always, you know, hiccups, but they've done a, an excellent job in communicating and uh, finding solutions. The other projects that I expect will be on, uh, on time and within budget are the East Pumniko Water Utility Project, which is the replacement of the wells, as you know, or reaffirmament of wells and associated equipment. And the West Pumniko D watering, the Trident um, D watering unit. We expect that to be substantially completed by March. It may, some of that may bleed into April, uh, but for the most part substantially completed by March thirty one, uh, but in both cases. The Rails to Trails and Fire Pond and Comfit Solar Projects, those were three large, well, medium sized projects. Uh, well, Comfit Solar was larger. They are delayed or off schedule for all sorts of different reasons. The Fire Pond, um, I have uh, a memo coming to council updating it in detail about where we are at with that. I think we uh, as staff, kind of pulled a little timeout on that after seeing the drought and seeing the results of what the drought does to some of our fire ponds. And so uh, we want to make sure that we are, A, focused on the fire ponds that survive drought uh, conditions and that are, and, and that we have any private property issues resolved. There are quite a few that are on private property and when we started to think about changes in safety measures, uh, those that own that property had a different perspective on what that fire pond was to be for them. So it really allow, it really, you know, it forced us to say, whoa. Uh, we need to make sure that we completely understand the situation. If private owners don't want their pond to be a fire pond, it's over. I mean, it's their property, right? So if they don't want that, uh, then we should not continue with those and, and should be ceasing them as fire ponds officially. So this one is a bit complicated because the issue at hand is a fire department issue. But we are uh, engaged in trying to uh, alleviate some of the problems that have come up with that. We are, I, I assure you that it is still a priority, a capital priority. It's just we have to look at it slightly differently, which means a little A priority, a capital priority, it's just we have to look at it slightly differently, which means a little delay. Uh Rails to Trails, what I did with the budget is allocated fifty thousand dollars a year for. For for a certain amount of years, and that was for rail uh improvement. Uh with that, I think our intentions got ahead of our ability to engage. And so our intention is to invest, I'm not sure we're gonna need that much to invest in Rails to Trails. Um we have done some significant review of the major pieces of the rail that are problematic. Public Works has been engaged, we now know the worst spa- spots and um I think we have a plan in place that. May actually be a lot less than what we thought it would be. The Wedgeport Septic Project is delayed due to covid and participation targets, we need to get so many people signed up. We now are at that number, we're comfortable. But by the time we got to that point, we we missed our construction window, plus our e- our engineers on the job. Had been really quarantined to the city uh for a period of time, which which would have further delayed uh the project. But I fully expect twenty twenty one will will be the year that it's completed. So that's a summary of the projects and the financial statements are s- are definitely attached for your information. Um I, as you know, as you've noticed, I didn't go in the numbers, the detail of the numbers, I stayed on the qualitative or descriptors. If there's any questions at all on the details, I I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Any questions for the C O? Counselor Sreck?
Uh first of all, the to the C O, that's a great uh what you've done there, I haven't seen that before. It really brings it all in the i- i- together and you can easier to fall, I find for myself.
Good.
Uh something that uh I'm concerned on. And uh it's, I don't see anything at all there for uh the uh the the. W- water infrastructure, infrastructure for any kind of water. Uh we're two thousand twenty one, is it gonna be a summer, a dry summer or not? I I I I thought we might have been moving a little, you know, closer to something, maybe. Where it said on your report, because there's no money allocated at this time, obviously, there was no number ever given, anyone to look at. But uh could you uh tell us where you are with that? Because summer is not far away and we're not having a big winter, which no.
Absolutely. So uh first I'll say that any of the current year activity that we did, i.e. Water purchases, water deliveries and all that would be included under the Remo budget um in your operations. But what you're asking about is capital. Um so the, there has not been an expense this year as of yet. On capital for um, you know, for the for for the potential of the public well, or whatever the solution might be. Uh what we are doing now, so 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 I'll say that. I- in the upcoming budget, we will certainly be adding an amount for for uh to invest in a solution. What's happening now, from an operational perspective, is we're asking questions of the provincial government around. Um what we can do to further bolster or improve our water lending. Uh projects. Uh I will say that public wells, while they uh sound good. And they certainly can be done. Uh there are some difficulties and challenges with environment. Around permitting and and how much comes out of these wells and holding tanks, et cetera. So we are actively working on that at this time to understand exactly what the cost might be in order to uh to do this. Uh our G I S tech, uh who happens to be uh recording this today, he's our recorder today. Um has done heat maps, understanding where um where pe- where people's wells have gone dry. So we have the statistics and the quantitative data to support if we did public wells, this is where we would do it. So that information is coming together, we have uh third-party experts coming in and and recommending. Um certain responses. At the end of the day, in talking with the hydrogeologists and all the experts. The best solution is on is an onsite solution, meaning resident solution. Uh public wells are fine for those who can't solve their problem locally, but but there but but for those people who may have like. Uh ineffective wells on their property and that the best solution for the drought conditions is. In a lot of ways to drill a new well. Now, it doesn't, it, that solution is not practical for every property, nor is it practical for every resident. Who have varying levels of income and of it and and ability to deal with this. So what we're saying is, well, if what is there a grant program? That that would would help us solve the problem the way that the problem ought to be solved, okay? So we are actively looking at that as well. And um what we're seeing is there's a lot of money being spent municipally and provincially on uh free water. And and water for for people who 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 need it. But what we've found is what is being used is far in excess of those who we would cons- we would say. Could not afford purchasing it. So that's that's an issue that we're trying to resolve and Remo is actively looking at that. I realize this is a la- a long answer to your question, but I guess what I'm saying is. The solution may be capital, but it may be an operational solution that is is um funded differently. Um and we're we're, it is a priority that we're all working on.
I think uh C O, you're complicating things. Uh here's why I'm saying that, and I'm saying that in a nice way, don't. The I I think your your answer, you you've had some great answer, but I think you're complicating things. I see, now ma- maybe you can correct me. I see that in Yarmouth, they have a place that they put a uh stand to go pick up water. And to me, that is so simple. I I think what you alluded to is too complicated. Not now, maybe my thinking of just putting the place where people can come and pick up water i- is. I- i- is more complicated than I'm than I'm thinking. So my question to you is, why don't we put something like Yarmouth has in Tuscan, in Camus Hill, in wherever, Pumniko? What that that seems to be so simple, but i- it doesn't seem to be what you were thinking. Because going to every house and digging somebody's well would be, to me, way more expensive than the well is going dry. Than going to, you know, than making one, one or three places in the municipality. Obviously, with if the province be taking some money, it would be easier, but could you maybe answer me? I- if you do have an answer, why not the place like what Yarmouth has done in the town?
Are you talking about the the place where you pay?
Yes.
And get the water, that that.
Yeah.
Ability? Uh I don't have an answer to that, I think that what you what you need to recognize is that that's connected to. That's connected to the water utility, so um you'd have some volume issues potentially with with that kind of facility. I'm not saying it's impossible to put that kind of a facility, but. You have to recognize that the water source is is one that's very different than our own. Now, it's not for drinking wa- purposes, so I I recognize that. That if we could do something like that, it would be useful, but at this point, I'm not sure how practical that would be. Secondly, the amount of volume that came out of that place. It would force us to regulate and have us a cause I utility of our own. So they're already regulated, they're already a utility. If we pull out more than twenty four thousand, I believe, liters, liters, I can't remember, in a day. Uh and I know we've been monitoring that with with West Pumniko, with 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 the uh with the situation where the resident has been. Like more than accommodating um and has done us such a in a tremendous service. But we watch to make sure that there's not more than twenty four thousand, because then at that point you start reporting, you have all these other things. So unfortunately, from a regulatory perspective, it is that complicated. Um I'm not suggesting that that digging everybody's wells i- is is the solution to that problem, but there might be. There might be um ways where we can help people solve their own problem at their at their home. Um it certainly wouldn't be uh entirely us that solves that problem. Um we are actively still looking at public wells and the 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 um. The view that we have from from the experts is that you can drill a well, fine, but if a bunch of people come. And pull water out of that, you you're gonna empty it. So y- you have to be mindful of holding tanks and making sure that there is a place for water to go. To refill the situation for the next day. Yeah, so, you know, we know it costs about twelve thousand to do a drill well, probably cost twice that to put in the equalization tanks. So you're talking about fifty thousand minimum um for a public well. I'm not suggesting it's impossible, I'm saying that's approximately what we're looking at for cost.
Thank you, C M U, appreciate it.
Counselor Sonya?
Just to add to the argument, uh if you had the same type of facility for water in Argyle. You still have to go pick up that water and deliver it. And for people who are old, they have to se- find someone to deliver it. And uh I kind of agree with Allah, a home solution is best. From my point of view, at my house, I never ran out of water, I came close, my neighbor did. But my neighbor down the hill from me did not, he had plenty of water because he's low-lying area. I I could solve my and my neighbors' uh uh s- well problems by digging a well at the bottom of the hill. That would supply both houses, it might not be fit for drinking, but it would run everything else. So um I I think I agree with the uh with the home remedy rather than than drilling a public well or or three or four.
Thank you. I know uh E M O or E M O coordinator, Remo coordinators, I mean, news has. Has said that several times, that if there was a way to get people to be able to to have their own wells, that would be the ideal situation. I think that's kind of what you're talking about, C O M U, is if we could get some funding, some grants to help residents dig a well for themselves, then that would be. That would be the ideal situation, but is it feasible economic? We we just would have to, you know, dig into that a bit further.
Yeah, I I I would just note, and I know it's it's hardly the agenda item, but it it does relate to capital, but.
Yeah.
I was, I would suggest that um, you know, the province spent probably, I don't, I can't, this is not official number. But, you know, upwards of thirty thousand dollars to deliver water, drinking water only to our location. And for us, between ourselves and the municipality of Yarmouth, we probably spent about eighteen. So you're looking at forty, you're looking at a public well.
Yeah.
Just in delivering um drinking water. And I think most people's problem is not the drinking water, it's access to water to do basic necessities in their home, like showers and. And and flushing toilets, and that's the big issue. And so most people can afford to get the four liter of of water, so I think we were solving the wrong problem. And I will say that, uh and I and I don't, and I and I sympathize, I mean, I I I certainly didn't have an issue at my home, but. My mother, it's like an annual thing, and I used to live there, imagine. So um so I I I know that there's an issue, and so from the from my, I would just note that. The recommendation coming from like the home solution is the best solution. I- it's not my recommendation, like we're hearing that from 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 the hydrogeologists, like obviously. Um it's an expensive solution for some, uh but I just wanted to note that that I'm I'm repeating. What I'm hearing with some of the experts that are that are sharing, this is an active file. Um for sure, so I just wanna make that clear.
Sure. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the financial statement, uh Counselor Dinkin?
Uh thank you. I guess by now you people know this, when something's good, I'll say it's good, if it's bad, I'll say it's bad. Um the financial statement, I believe, reflects a lot on our municipality, on our staff, on our C O. And how we are doing uh as a council, and how our C O is doing with his staff for us. Uh there's a lot of municipalities in the province that would like to be, have a financial statement like we have. And I'd just like to say thank you on our part, on my part.
Great point.
To everyone, staff and C O.
Thank you, Council Dinkin. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? Okay, C O M U, do we have to make a motion to pass your report?
We, I usually ask for that you accept the report.
Okay, so is there somebody who would like to take counsel for it? Do we have a seconder? Uh Counselor Donaldson, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand, contrary-minded. Good, motion carried, thank you, thank you for that. Next, we will move to um number six on the agenda. Notice period for municipal policy, so there are three policies that we're going to quick, that we're going to look at. You've had the chance to look them over, this is not, we're not making motions on these policies, this is just the notice period. Um with the first one that we'll look at is uh six A Code of Conduct for staff. So you've probably, I'm sure you've had a chance to read it. Um this has been, this policy has been provided, staff has seen this policy, they've had opportunity to ask questions about it. Um they've had opportunity to have input on this policy, and this is the policy as presented to us. So are there any questions or comments from council regarding this policy? Counselor Dinkin?
Uh the, well, again, I guess, again, I call it uh like I see it sometimes. I know uh that the uh counselors now have a code of conduct. And that that we've agreed upon, and this policy, uh this application policy in the administrative manual. Uh Code of Conduct for the staff, this policy applies to all employees of the municipality of the District of Argyle. Does that also include our C O?
It does.
Okay, cuz I just, I didn't know for sure, cuz I know you're the municipal, you're the council staff. So I wasn't sure how that worked, so just wanted to make sure that. If if the staff is gonna have something, and we're gonna have something, guess what? You're gonna have something as well, so, yeah.
Couldn't agree more.
That's all.
Uh actually, for 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 clarity, you make a good point, under application, what we'll say is for the for the approval period. Or when you have the chance to approve, I will include the language, including the C O, so that there's no doubt.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good, thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? No, not seeing any. Okay, so this is just the notice period, so we'll look at. Um the second policy, the progressive discipline policy for staff. So if you've had a chance to read through that, basically, um the way that I looked at that was that it's a way that if there is an issue. That comes up discipline-wise with staff, it's it it was laid out, I thought it was laid out quite well as to how each situation is dealt with. Um and it even gave levels of of issues that there may be when it comes to discipline and and whether it's, you know. Oh verbal warning, everything is laid out in that policy, I felt it was very clear. But um I'm opening it up to anybody else who has any questions or comments regarding that policy. Counselor Dinkin, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Again, will it uh, this policy implies all employees of the municipality of Argyle. And will our C O be included in that one as well?
That's a more complicated question, uh because the. Eh I mean, the answer is, it can, uh but but then it presents some prac- some practical issues. Uh because then um. It would be who actually. Leads that particular piece, right? It is definitely written under an understanding that a department head will deal with their staff. And then, of course, department heads come to. Um I think on that question, I would say that it is our intention to treat everyone as equally as possible. But on this one, Code of Conduct, it's easy, simple, it is everyone, right? On this one, it's 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 the practical nature of an issue. So if you don't mind, counselor, I I'm going to get a third party. To confirm how and whether it applies to myself as C O. Um it is absolutely my intention to be held accountable, so I just wanna be clear on that. It's just I'm concerned about the practicality of that in this particular uh instance, because in most cases. It's something that has to be observed, and so it's a little different, right? So my intention is to have everybody, okay? But that we may have to make some slight changes in order to make sure it's practically applicable.
Okay, I'd be willing to wait for those changes, and you know, we could have like instead of a department head, maybe. Like our warden and deputy warden would lead as far as for the progressive discipline, something like that. It's just, i- if if you're gonna be included in the policy and that there have to be some way. It's just, i- if if you're gonna be included in the policy, and that there have to be some way to have a discipline policy in there for you as well. I I feel.
Well, yeah, and you may, and and this may not be the appropriate way to do it, it 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 has to be done. Um so I recognize that, but this may not be the appropriate policy to do that, so let me get a little bit of, let me get some advice on that. And get back to you, it's probably, I mean, this has been formulated uh using um. Some templates that we have legal representation on, like so that we do get legal advice on these. So let me get back to you, cuz I'm concerned that I would give you the wrong answer if I do today.
It sounds fair, thank you.
Thank you, Warden Muse.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing there, because. It's a different situation than what is indicated in this, in this one here. Because i- it's it specifies different departments specify, you know what I mean, like department heads will will deal. We may need something separate or something, something that 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 is just. Geared towards that type of employee, where where is the only employee that we have, a- and it may not fit. We, in order to change that, you may have to change a lot more than just than just, uh you you just can't add the C A O. It, un- unless, unless it's a totally different uh paragraph in there that deals with the C O only, okay? So I think it's something before before we do anything that that we have to look at that and and and. Have a third party look at it and 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 give us the the right way to deal with this.
I I I think that this is often dealt with under a C A O evaluation, which can be done. Uh via separate policy, um and 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 specifically looking at this, it is possible that this policy. Just needs to be slightly amended in order to make sure that it includes me. The problem with just saying it applies to everyone is that there isn't a strong process in this right now, the way that it's written. For uh any sort of like progressive discipline um situation. So I think the best way to to address uh Counselor Dinkin's question is to actually get the get your legal. Representative to give you advice directly on that, then you're comfortable, because it's kind of self-serving in a way. Right, me me trying to either say it belongs or it doesn't, I think we need a third. Party to just confirm or dispel whether or not this policy uh applies. It's a good question, and we should be very clear on it. So my takeaway is, we'll get legal and come back. So again, this is notice, so if there's significant changes to this, it will likely require another notice period. So it's not gonna pass either way without your input.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to the next policy. Um it is our emergency fund, so for, I just wanted to quickly summarize for our two new counselors. For Counselor Sonia and Counselor Budrow, we started this emergency fund a few years ago, it came up because actually, I had a resident in my district. In the dead of winter, furnace broke down, they didn't have the ability to to the means to buy another furnace, and so the municipality. Helped out, helped provide a furnace for that resident, and we really had no policy in place for this type of situation. So we started, um we started this, we started a fund um through, I'm not sure if you're aware, but typically with it. When we don't have COVID, we do the Experience Argyle, where we have that event, um where there is a showcase of. Food and everything from Argyle, as well as a presentation, and we, people pay to come to that, and those, that money goes to this fund. So we had to have a policy in order to know how do we distribute these funds if a resident comes to you with an emergency situation. So that's what this policy is for, so some of the things that um you will see, there are highlights in the policy, so three point three. No resident may receive more than one dis- dispersment in one calendar year, even if the maximum dispersment wasn't used. And three point four, the maximum amount to be dispersed in one calendar year is five hundred dollars per household. So typically, the way it works is you'll hear either through the grapevine, or you'll hear from the resident themselves that there's an issue, that they have an emergency situation. You're contacted, and this policy tells you exactly, you, there's paperwork that you fill out, and if you um take. If you've read read through the policy, you, and it says they have to be from the municipality of Argyle, the it, the need is critical in nature. They have to provide in writing the nature of the emergency, the second resident has to co-sign. And for this policy, property taxes owing are not considered. It it it's okay, it it's okay if they have taxes owing, that's not part of this policy. This fund is really to help residents who are in dire need and need our help. Um one of the questions that I had when I was looking at this, um three point five. The resident must provide in writing the nature of the emergency, I wondered if, like, when I've done this before for residents, I've written that myself. So I'm wondering if we can have that amended, is that a possibility that it's okay that we as counselors write in the the request of the the emergency? Or does it have to be the resident themselves that write in the request?
It it does not, in fact, from a practical perspective, many times counselors are asked for variety of reasons to fill it in. Whether it's literacy concerns or whatever the reason, um compassionate reasons. Um this is entirely okay, the only thing that we say in this policy is that somebody has to vouch for that person. Or if council is doing the application and vouching for the person, i- it it might be useful to have another person vouch. And indicate that that yes, this person is in that urgent need. So it's not just falling on one person.
Right.
To to do.
Counselor Budrow?
Um just wanna say that's, I think that's a great idea, I think that's an awesome idea. Because there's always, there's always people in need, right?
It's been a useful, it has really been useful.
I can see that, yeah, awesome, good idea.
Warden Muse.
When it comes to having another resident, some some of these people, when they have a problem like that. They're not really, they're not really. Unwhole about having other people know that they're applying for this, that they're in in trouble. And when you're saying another resident, would it have to be a neighbor or whatever, because not everybody wants. Their neighbor to know their business, I like like I've always vouched for the ones that have come to me, I vouch because I know the people. But I've never gone to another resident to do that, I I I'm not sure if that's. A- a- and for for privacy reasons more than anything else.
I think in some circumstances, like I know I had another situation, sorry, I'm just, I had another situation where um. It was brought to my attention that a resident needed help, but I really, that person was new to the community, and I really didn't know them well. So I contacted somebody in the community that I knew, like knows everybody, right? And so indirectly, they vouched for that person, that's kind of how how I approached that situation. Only because I didn't know who the person was, because they were new to the community. Uh Counselor Sonia.
So in the case, in the case of that family that the furnace broke down, expediency is is very important. So, uh I mean, they could freeze, and the water pipes could freeze, so how, if 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 the resident doesn't know this. That that Argyle municipality can help, how do they get their information out there?
In my case, the resident contacted me right away, this was even before this program was in place. So you will see that you will get calls for things um that are emergencies. Things that are not necessarily emergency.
I've had those.
Yeah, um you'll be able to kind of decipher what, that's why the vouching part is really important. But you're right, in that situation, it was critical that it happened quickly, and and a lot of times, this does happen quickly. That's why the language in this has to be, it has to be very specific, so even in in three point six, when it says a second resident. Shall co-sign the application, I feel like the language in there should be, or the counselor shall co-sign sign the application. Because sometimes we don't have time to go find a co-signer, and and we couldn't, I feel like we could act as that co-signer. Is that agreeable with everybody?
I'm gonna take this a step further.
Yeah.
You 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 come to my house and I'm freezing, uh by the time the plumber comes in to replace my furnace. Could be a whole day. Uh I need to go someplace else, because I'm cold, I'm freezing, so what happens then?
Well, I guess you would assess the situation, does that person have family in the area?
I mean, have you guys ever seen that?
I ha- I haven't seen that situation um yet, um I don't know if other counselors have. But you kind of, yes, Counselor Saret has, um you kind of assess the situation and see. Every situation is going to be different, right, you have people who live in your community who don't have family in your community, right? So it's it's harder to find services to help, what you do, you reach out, you contact Remo, you you can even contact um our C A O and and. You give him a call and say, look, this is the situation, where do I go next, and and typically, you know, if if we're stuck and we don't know, that's always my first phone call. C A O Muse, what do I do next, and and that's what, he has those services at his fingertips and can help us out with that.
Thank you.
Yes.
The history in application has mostly been powers out, can't pay the bill. Um oil is low or no, and we're filling tanks. In both of those e- e- examples, particularly in oil, we've seen that. Solution in less than twenty-four hours. Our suppliers have been excellent, we have suppliers that we just contact, and they just, they send us the bill, and we pay up to. What what the application allows us to, um so those are the two most re- most uh common. Uh requests, sometimes it's like roof is leaking or um and or, you know, sometimes it's wood, right, they're requesting that they don't all have oil, they have wood, so. That's been the most recent, the most uh common request, just so that you are all aware.
Okay, any other questions, any other Counselor Saret?
Uh a situation just lately on oil, and I and I tell you what. It was a very, very dire situation, I I can't go into details, obviously I wouldn't, but let me tell you. I made one phone call like Nicole said, and our C A O took care of it, but it was a dire situation. So on a page, it's the first time it ever happened, to me in twelve years, and C A O knew. My question and he didn't even question me, it was done, thank you.
Thank you.
Credit goes to Bonnie Jerky. Just saying.
Counselor Board.
Thank you Deputy Warden, um it says here, the the one that's highlighted says, no resident may receive more than one dispersment. In one calendar year, even if maximum disper- dispersment wasn't used. Then it says three point four, the maximum amount to be dispersed in one calendar is five hundred dollars per household. So number three point three says, if you only use two hundred and fifty dollars, you can't ask again. I- am I right? Yeah, so then it says in three point four, you're allowed five hundred dollars per household a year. So it sort of contradicts itself, I find.
You can ask, correct, uh the interpret, the the the, how we interpret that is. You put in one application, if you need two hundred, you get two hundred, you don't get another one later on for three hundred, just because the max is five hundred. If you have once in a particular year and you need five hundred, then that will be according to that person.
Okay.
We do lifelong maximums, it's not because, without compassion. It's just that, you know, we have a lot of people that may need this, and and we have limited funds. Um the funds that come out of this, um it started with the uh Experience Argyle event. So the proceeds from that event would go towards this emergency fund, we still have funds available, I can't. I can't recall exactly how much, but uh but it's 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 enough to deal with with uh, you know, requests at this time.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So just a deputy warden for clarity, so did I understand that the council wanted to change the vouching? To include the counselor, and if the counselor is making the application as well. Um what I'm hearing is that perhaps they can also be the person vouching for privacy purposes?
That's what I understood, right?
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Sounds good. So that will come back to us, right, with the all those amendments, and we'll take a look at it again. Excellent, okay. Number seven for decision and discussion, number seven A, grants to organizations. So. In the grants to organizations policy, there were some amendments made for pandemics. Right, because when this policy was created, the thoughts of the pandemic really were not. Um nobody really thought that that would happen, and how that would affect our grants to organizations, so we've actually seen. Uh these changes this year and how we sold out our money, um there is, if you look at nine point one, nine point two, nine point three, nine point four. Um they are all amendments have, I'm sure you've had the chance to look at them, is there any questions or comments? On the amendments to the policy for grants to organizations? Okay, seeing none, so we make a, oh, sorry, uh Counselor Donaldson, sorry about that, go ahead. You have to unmute. Mute.
Sorry about that, I was just gonna make the motion that we accept this policy.
Perfect, can we have a seconder, uh uh? Warden Muse, second. Um is that okay? Yes, that's what you wanted to do, you want a second, okay? All right, is there any quite, any questions, concerns, uh Counselor Saret?
Uh just a question, and maybe I've, I've forgotten this, uh was this brought to us at the last meeting, uh can we pass this now? Yeah, I gotta slip my mind, thank you.
That's okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay. Call question, okay, I think I saw Counselor Dinkin, that's what you, reading lips, perfect, okay, so all those in favor, uh raise your hand. Okay, contrary, raise your hand, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the temporary borrowing resolution from the operating reserve. So my understanding for this one is that, let me see, we have um. We're looking to borrow from ourselves, because our money is starting to deplete. Um and we are looking at having to finish paying off our building. And in order to do that, we're going to have to borrow some money, and in order to borrow that money, we have to have this temporary borrowing resolution. Is that correct, C A O Muse?
That is correct, and it is temporary, because as you know, we have a loan coming from F C M when projects completed.
Yes.
So this is, we may not need this, but I will, I'm cautious, so I'd like to have it in place.
And there is a suggested motion on the bottom of the information, are there any questions, any discussion? Uh Counselor Saret?
Well, I I I think you've kind of explained in a sense, but uh about that interest, that don't make any sense to me. But i- is it, but what is it legislated that we have to do this?
Yes.
Kind of crazy, but.
Yeah, it's it's what they allow, the province allows you to borrow from yourself, because each each fund has a purpose. Right, so if you're if you're using the money outside of that purpose, and in this case, you would be, because it's it's a loan. So any loan, intermunicipal loan between accounts, even as within ourselves. We have to say there's a payment plan, and there's an interest rate, so we're charging ourselves interest. Um it's not unusual, it it sounds unusual, uh and and that I agree with. Uh but we are charging ourselves interest uh because the cash is available, now our option, obviously, if the cash wasn't available, we'd have to go outside and borrow the money. So we're just, because we have the cash available in the operating reserve, we're borrowing from the reserve.
Yeah, thank you, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, is there a seconder on that motion? Uh Counselor Sonia, thank you, is, are there any discussion questions? Okay, question? Call question, uh all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand, motion carry, thank you. Next, we have strategic priorities, the process, so we had. So we had asked C A O news to come back to us with a process that we'd like to follow for our strategic planning. Um if you look, so um there is like a grid of how this process can take place. Council is not necessarily hands in on every single step of the process, but we are consulted along the way. And if you notice, um so there are dates attached. So the first step is February ninth, the com- potentially completed date. And this is information gathering. It goes to step two, step three, but step, the vision exercise is my understanding, where we'll all kind of come together and where we'll have that conversation, that discussion piece. So if you've looked at the steps and you feel like it seems like a reasonable process, there is um, we will need a motion to to approve this process for our strategic plan. So is there somebody willing to make that motion? Uh Counselor Bork is making the motion, do we have a second there?
I'll start you, Nick.
Okay, um Warden Muse, seconded. Do we have any conversation, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, um can we have a show of hands, anybody, everybody who's in favor? Thank you, contrary, raise your hand. Perfect, motion carry. Okay, that was easy. Next. Letter D, fire inspector designation. So we all know that we're having some struggles with getting all of our fire inspections done. We're borrowing from Barrington. And it's just, we're still not able to fill all our needs. So we have a staff member who has been willing to take some courses in becoming, doing some of the fire inspection. Um we're kind of pooling from our public works department. There has been some restructuring in that department as we've discussed a few times here in council. And um we have Tara Owen, who has completed fire inspection level one. And she is willing to have the designation of fire inspector. So we need a motion because it's kind of considered a part of a new position for her. So we need a motion to endorse that uh fire designation for Tara. Is somebody willing to make a motion, Counsel- uh Warden Muse? Did you have a question or do you want to make a motion?
Well, I I can make a motion, but before I do, uh when she goes into that position, what happens to the position that she's in now? Will she be able to do both?
Uh she'll be able to do this uh part of the uh tasks because the fire inspection component is estimated to be about between forty and forty-five percent of the time allotted. For, so she will not be able to do all of the tasks that are typically um asked of her. And we we have a solution that we're, that we're proposing uh for that. So we do have another person that we are looking at for that.
I'll move that to Gerald be be appointed as our fire inspector.
Thank you, do we have a second there, uh Counselor Digden? Are there any questions on that motion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna Counselor Saret, did you have a question? Oh, okay, you call question, okay, gotcha. Um all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand, motion carry, thank you. It's tricky, Zoom is tricky. All right, so the next one, seven E, volunteers and certificate of appreciation. So that, from what I understand, was asked to be put on the agenda by Counselor Saret and counselors and Counselor Sonya. So the floor, who would like to speak first on that? Counselor Saret, okay, you're up.
Uh yes, uh due to uh, I guess, what happened, the tragic accident that happened uh in Morris Island and uh you know, such a great outpour of support from ground search and rescue to all the volunteers. And I know the counselors Sonya had the same thing when they did their search in Clement. Uh I I guess my my intention was that uh what happened at the end of, on the Thursday, the R C M P were done, ground search and rescue had covered most of the shoreline. And what they decided to do was call everything off and uh go into a missing person. But, you know, fi- five local fishermen took the time on the Saturday morning, went and picked up a couple of drafts from the R C M P, went on their own and dragged and found the body for this missing person. So what I like to do, if it was, the council would go along with this, is make out the fire certificates or provide the names and to give out to uh these five people that went over and above the call of duty uh to do this on their own, nobody asked, they weren't pushed by anybody, and 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 we all know what happened. So tha- that was the point on this, uh for 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 the certificate of appreciation.
Absolutely, great idea. Counselor Sonya, did you want to speak on it or was that?
It um it's the same type of topic, but I just want to expand to to what the Counselor Saret was saying. It it it's uh, these events kind of, kind of reawoke a a a thought that I had in the past. Like uh the volunteers beyond just search and rescue that showed up that weekend. Again, uh I just brought to my attention the amount of volunteers we had in in our communities. And I I I call them the lifeblood of our communities. They, they, they fill our schools, our clubs, our community halls, our churches, sports, veterans, legions, uh cares, care homes and fire, uh uh you know, the the fire department, the ground search and rescue without saying. There there's so many that when council gives every year two certificates for outstanding volunteers, it's well appreciated and they understand. I I believe there's, there are so many volunteers out there that it's impossible for them to get an award. I I I think it would be appropriate to, in 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 maybe our bulletin or in the letter, uh community letter, where we put out bulletins, is is to acknowledge all the volunteers we have and thank them for what they do in the course of a year. And I'd like to see that happen, not just once, but every year. I I I think, a- again, these people spend their time, they they don't even ask for a thank you. I I volunteered myself a bit in the past, and I was totally amazed that the uh gratitude I had, looking back as to what I did. And I think that's why most of these people don't need thank yous or don't want it. Uh it's because they 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 know the good they do. And I think it's only appropriate that we acknowledge that, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
So are you saying, uh Counselor Sonya, that you would like to see an acknowledgement of volunteers, like a small section on our newsletter? Is that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's a great suggestion. And they're always looking for ideas to add to our newsletters, so that would be a great.
I mean, they're in every village.
Yes.
And it doesn't take much to wake them up.
Absolutely.
And most of them don't even need waking up, they're always awake, they're always doing something.
Definitely. And Counselor Saret, you're looking for specific, you'd like to have like a letter that would be sent to some of your volunteers. That's what you're.
And should I, Deputy Warden, should I make a motion on that?
I think we should, I think we should make a motion on that, on, can we, C A O news, can we make a motion on both of those issues to have uh like a letter, kind of a volunteer recognition letter formulated, as well as a section on our newsletter added? Or would those be two separate?
I would do two separate, um because one is very one-time specific and the other is ongoing.
Right, okay, thank you, so.
Uh Deputy Warden?
Yes.
Deputy Warden, sh- should I name those people? Because I know sometimes you, we should put a name or, I mean, I I'm looking for maybe some, somebody to tell her. I don't know if I should be saying the names of the five people here? Or could I just say uh certificate of appreciation to the five people who went out that day? But I'm not sure how to make that motion.
I say if we're not sure have what to do, then I would err on the side of not saying their names. Right, just in case, it's not everybody is not everybody is okay with that, some would be, but I think that if you're uncertain, Counselor Saret, I think I would say in recognition of the five volunteers.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to make a motion that we have a uh letter of appreciation uh to the uh vo- five volunteers who went down, you know, on that day to uh to do the search and uh, you know, uh and 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 I'll see the C A O to 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 arrange it. I made that a motion.
Can we have a second there on that motion? Counselor Bork, any questions, concerns? Counsel uh Warden Muse, thank.
Yes, I'm, uh my question is, you said a letter, is it a letter or is it a type of a certificate? You know what I mean, there's a difference. Uh if we write a letter saying we thank them or we 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 issue a certificate and stating on certificate why they received that.
Thank you Danny, it's a certificate, I'll put that in the motion, thank you Danny.
Because that's what I, that's what I understood when you talked about it first, so, yeah.
Okay, so we can amend that, okay, C A O news, is that, is that possible, okay? Okay, so any other questions? Okay, seeing none, um all those in favor, can you show me by raising your hand? Thank you, contrary minded. Okay, motion carry, thank you, Counselor Saret. Um Counselor Sonya, you have a motion you'd like to make?
Yeah, I just uh would like to make a motion that we uh add to our yearly bulletin, a thank you and appreciation of of appreciation to all our our volunteers in our community.
Can we have a second there, Counselor Saret? Do we have any questions, any discussion? Yes, C A O news?
Um so I initially understood that you might want like a volunteer corner? So every newsletter would have some form of celebration of our volunteers? Is that what I'm understanding?
Uh that's up for debate, but it sounds good.
Okay, are you okay with that, Counselor Sonya? Like, so that every time the newsletter goes out, there's like a volunteer corner there highlighting volunteers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be our pleasure to do that.
Did we have a second there for that motion? Can't remember.
I think, I think Counselor Saret already seconded that.
Counselor Saret seconded, okay. Um yes, uh Warden Muse.
So in this volunteer corner, as we called it, are we gonna be mentioning names or are we just going, is it just going to be a general, a general uh uh message about the appreciation that we have for that for volunteers?
I I think there's too many names to mention.
Yeah, and we might forget some.
Right.
Uh you're bound to, and and I think there are some that are just so, so, so uh sublime, I guess, if you want to say the word. You're just under the radar, so so to speak.
Yes, agreed. So it would be like a general?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, um all those in favor, can you show me by raising your hand? Good, negative, raise your hand, no, good, motion carry. Sounds good. Seven F, ground search and rescue, that one was also Counselor Sonya.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of meeting one of the head guys from the Mitchigan Department, you know, the ground search and rescue. And and uh I was told at the time by our search and rescue that they were only second to Halifax. They were really well, well organized and well funded. So I asked a few questions and uh I thought maybe I would uh report on the answers I got from them from the question that I asked to help this council make any future decision on 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 the our own uh ground search and rescue. So I wrote down just a few notes. The 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 facility that they use is a known service station that is owned by the municipality. But the municipality still owns it, but they allow the uh ground search and rescue to use it. And it's tax-free and it is heated by the municipality. Uh they give them a five thousand dollar uh funding every year. And they also uh 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 fundraise. So ba- basically, what it is, they're they're secure in their building. And that's, once they were secure, I guess the message I'm trying to say here is that there's, there's very little maintenance on their part. You just have to make sure that their own equipment is up to par and therefore the funding is only five thousand dollars, the municipality takes care of the rest. Now, I know that this situation is different and I just thought I would pass that on to you guys and let you know how these guys operate, being so that they're so well equipped. That's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
I think it would be a great idea as well, Counselor Sonya, when we have our tri-unit meeting, when we're talking about ground search and rescue, I think that it would be a great time as well to bring that information up because we're, we're gonna be probably discussing all kinds of alternatives and how we can best service them. So that would be a great tidbit to kind of bring up for them as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Saret?
Uh yes, on ground search and rescue, uh what I'm gonna say, one of the per person on on here is not gonna like it because he's too modest. And here's what I'm gonna say, I would like to say how proud I am of Carl Store and a shop of car for what they've done for ground search and rescue. You have no idea the comments, the positives that I've heard over what they've done, which was so, so simple to the staff and management at Carl Store. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Saret, you are one hundred percent correct. I have had a lot of dealings with conversations with a board member from ground search and rescue and I I don't know how many conversations I've had with him about him, about this, how excited they are and how they're, they can't believe the support that they've received from the community and and for Carl Store for doing this for them. So thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? Any other issues? Okay, so we don't need any, no, we don't need any motions there. So we're going to move on to G vandalism, and that one is for Counselor Bork.
Thank you Deputy Warden, um in my community, I brought it up the other day. Um within the last year, we've had a quite a bit of vandalism going on, tires slashed at the war. Windows, windows of vehicles busted out, um just all kinds of different things going on. Windows uh being something thrown, rocks thrown through a window of a house. Um vehicles being vandalized and and underneath lighting, like at at the community center, somebody had their vehicle there and and they got slashed. And it's just, uh people are annoyed, so I just thought uh we'd have to have something going on. I mean, we can't keep it going on. So uh just wanted maybe the community to get together or, and then I guess we're gonna have a meeting. Um uh there's a meeting set up, I think, in February, C A O, I think that's sometimes uh February the third, February the third, we're having a meeting with the advisory committee along with the uh uh R C M P Le Quo, to see what we can do.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
So it's just uh my my re- the uh the residents are tired of this, so.
Understood.
So I thought I'd step up a bit and to see what what could be be done.
Any comments or questions? Okay, keep us posted about your meetings, uh Counselor Bork, let us know how that goes. I think that's a great step to take, great step forward. Okay, um number eight, correspondence and for information. So the first piece of correspondence was from Minister Suzanne Lonescroft. It was a thank you letter and she was thanking us for our con- our support for um provincial, extra provincial funding, an increase in the provincial funding grant, sorry, provincial grant for the Village Seric Acadia. So it was a thank you letter for us. Then we had um B, there were notes on municipal owned land. Um I'm not sure, I'm sure you've had the chance to take a look through that. I myself had a few questions about that. Mainly, we're looking at we're looking at um potential growth in that land behind our building and we've started that process. And I I guess my concern is we want to make sure we do this right the first time, right? We want to make sure that we get this done right. So um I asked C A O news about, I know we haven't had a P A C meeting in quite some time. So he said that this is an issue that could be brought to the P A C so that we can really take a look at how we're gonna plan this land and and what types of uses we're looking at. Um were there any other people who would like to talk about that issue, any other questions, comments? So it will, it's my understanding that it is going to be brought to the P A C to. So it will, it's my understanding that it is going to be brought to the PAC to to make sure that we have a plan for that that land behind.
Uh, that that's correct. The memo that is attached here is is for information of council. If council wishes, it can ask the PAC officially by motion here to to develop a sort of plan uh uh around the development of that of that public road. I would suggest that that would be um it would be appropriate uh to assign this work to the PAC so that you can get public input on it. Um, the memo does identify that it is clear that your intentions are to do residential at the backside. But where it's less than clear is what does that look like? What's the mix? And is there any commercial that is acceptable in that mix? So I think that's work by motion here. If you wish, you can assign that to the PAC.
Somebody willing to make that motion, that we assign that work to the PAC?
Make that motion.
Counselor Donaldson, and we have a secondary. I think I heard Warden Muse's name, his voice, okay? Any other discussion, conversation on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Good, contrary-minded, raise your hand now. Good, motion carry. Thank you.
Before you go on, can I, and we're on correspondence, I just want to to uh tell everybody that today I've had, I don't know how many, how many uh uh messages and emails regarding the the bridging YMCA.
I have.
I don't know if they have some kind of a, they must have gotten together because today seemed to be the day that they started coming more and more about their their support, how they support the uh. So I don't know if it was sent to all council. I know there are some that were addressed to me only uh with their concern and 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 uh there is definitely a lot of uh, there's a lot of support for that being open. And I think it's time that we start looking at what we're going to do with that.
Agreed.
I know we're working on it, but it doesn't seem to be moving very fast at this point. And I think we need to, well, we're going to have, we're going to have a a a meeting with the uh three councils together. And I think that's going to be something that's going to be discussed because we're going to have the swim, the swim uh teams, the swim meets that are going to be uh present presenting to us as well, so. Anyway, just wanted to bring it up. I didn't know if everybody had had them or not, so.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I have received a few as well today, more than more than typical. And I think it's important. I'm glad that they're sending us messages because we, yeah, you've had some as well. We have, we have to hear those voices. You know, if we're going to move forward and make decisions, so. Great point. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, nine, financial requests. I don't see that there are any financial requests. Okay, uh, number ten, agenda topics for next meeting or notice of council, uh, notice of motion by counselors. Does anybody have an agenda topic or a notice of motion? Okay, see, oh, Counselor Woodrow? You're muted? Unmute, unmute.
Uh, being you at the uh the council gate here, uh I don't know the uh, the like the the, or my constituents are asking, you know, why are the secondhand uh secondary roads not plowed, you know? As being a new counselor, um, could we talk about that policy, like uh the the uh DOT's policy on on snowplow removal or snow, snow removal?
Typically, we have a meeting. The Department of Transportation comes in on a yearly basis and they will sit and they will kind of like um our MLA did with us today.
Yeah.
Sit and ask our concerns and they, there is a li- and those are opportunities to ask them questions. But those are a lot of the calls that we get about about roads and plowing and gravel roads and and it it's, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing issue and it's a frustrating issue for them and us as well.
Yeah, like, I mean, uh, once a, once a storm is 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 done, it takes like uh two or three days before they plow the secondary roads. It's, it's, I don't, I don't understand why it takes them so long.
There is a specific protocol that they follow. Is that on their website, CAO Muse?
It is. Uh, what I can do is uh in the, in the uh, I will send you all the link uh for that information so that you can flip it to your residents. All we'll do is, uh, if if Alex doesn't mind, um, is to put the link inside of our Facebook Live um here, so that that will be part of like the comments, that somebody will just be able to click the link. Um, there, the, I can tell you that the policy is is quite different for secondary as it is for primary. Uh, and and I think the residents can, certainly the residents can express their their displeasure to the policy or or perhaps even more importantly, can express their displeasure if the policy is not being met.
Yeah, yeah.
If they're setting an expectation and they're not meeting it, then that, that's certainly something that we should be raising to to DOT.
Okay, it was just something that was brought up during my campaigning, right? And I had no, I I didn't have any answers for it, so.
And keep track of those concerns, uh, Counselor Woodrow, so that when they do come to talk to us, you can kind of have a list of things that residents have contacted you about because they will ask you that.
Awesome, thank you.
Counselor Saret.
Uh, do you think that it would be all right for Charlene to, uh, I don't know if she still does it. On Thursday, she used to have a Facebook thing. She should maybe interview uh Don Houston. Be a good way to to do, who knows?
Uh, so 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 uh our our community development officer took a bit of a COVID hiatus, but we can still look at a Zoom option for that. Um, you, I mean, certainly we can take a look at that as an as an option.
Great suggestion, Counselor Saret.
Yeah, it 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 makes it a little lighter as well, like the way she does it is is, it's not as like you know, it's more of a lighter uh interview, so that might be useful.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, so next we have question period. Were there any questions from Facebook Live? There were, okay.
Yeah, uh, there was one about mosquitoes that came in, um, I think, uh, through counselor. Um, there was a question via counselor about what what are we doing with mosquitoes? And I think, I think that um um, we did receive some information from MLA Colton o- off camera because it was a, it was an informal uh information meeting, but uh clearly nothing private discussed. And mosquitoes were discussed and that the Department of um Lands and Forests or and also formerly Natural Resources as well as Environment have been responding to questions from our MLA uh regarding that. Um, the the solution is extraordinarily expensive. We know that. And uh, or at least the suggested solution uh from the province. There may be some alternate solutions that we can't talk about, but um but the the solutions that they authorize uh involved involve a um a a natural pesticide, I guess. It's not really a a chemical pesticide. It's a natural um uh defense against the larvae production. The the province is suggesting that it's most likely a saltwater mosquito uh variant uh because you can have all sorts of variants. And they are particularly aggressive and that would, that would be consistent with what my personal experience has been. Um, and uh so we don't have a municipally, uh, certainly we don't have a municipally-funded solution for this at this time. I don't think that the province is indicating as of yet any sort of interest in in solving that problem financially uh at this time. That being said, we don't have full information. It's time for us to give, I guess, at least a partial update to our residents who are concerned. Uh, we can give them what we have so far and uh what else is happening uh there. Um, uh, it's, it's, it's a cha- it's a challenging issue um to address, particularly if it's saltwater, uh, because we just, we happen to have a lot of that uh in our air, in our communities. So um, uh, I I wish I had a a more solid answer or solution to the ongoing issue. But at this time, that's what we know. We know that there is uh a solution that has occurred in Moncton. We've had meetings with those individuals. And uh it is extraordinarily expensive uh solution. Uh, there may be some other solutions that were not yet completed in terms of investigation. It's the best answer I have for that one.
Okay, Counselor Sonia, did you want to add something? You're muted.
Yeah, I got a question that I forgot to ask the first time we talked about these pests. Would I be correct to assume that Sarus Nova is probably the only significant marshland in Nova Scotia?
Uh, I.
I I think we do.
That could be true. I can't answer it accurately. I know we have an abundance of marshland.
And we being isolated and all that, I say no more. Okay.
Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, I just want to ask anybody if they remember all the the flies from the Minx. How many years that come up in a row and it never ever got addressed, so. Uh, I know Alex on there listening. We have millions and millions and millions of birds migrate this way in the spring of the year to eat these bugs that you're complaining about. So we got to be careful with messing around with nature on how much you do and what you can do. And I have mosquitoes. We have marsh here in Lower Argyle too, so it's, it's more than Sluse Point, Shretz Island, Morse Island. I think it's, it's the whole municipality or coastal part of our municipality. Pumiko Harbor is full of marshes. So, yeah, I I see this as going, unfortunately going nowhere. I mean, you ever watch television when they're up north doing a documentary or something in the summertime? Like, there's just swarm and swarm with mosquitoes and black flies. So I think Canada is quite unique for the number of, I guess, black flies and mosquitoes we have. And if anybody is wondering why my head's always down, like my, my uh laptop is up here and my iPad's down here, so I can follow the agenda and open the attachments and read. So when I'm usually reading, so I'm not praying or doing anything like that. It's just it's just the way I'm set up here, that's all.
I like the fancy background you were experimenting with earlier in the meeting. Looked good.
I gotta, I gotta, yeah, I gotta get that down pat. I don't know.
All right, were there any other questions um from the public? Yes, okay.
One more. Uh, I happened to notice, Counselor Donaldson, that it went up when I was doing the financial review. I just, I don't think that's related, but anyway. Uh, uh, the uh, the other question was uh, with whether the communities of Pumiko and Wedgeport currently pay a surtax for their sidewalks. The answer is no. And they never were asked to uh pay a user fee at the time of installation, to the best of my understanding. And I think that has a lot to do with with Richard's point where it was eighty percent or mostly uh funded provincially. So that would explain why we didn't uh do it then. Uh, yeah, there's no sur- surcharge for the maintenance of those sidewalks. The maintenance of those sidewalks is just simply provided by by the, by by our services. And in fact, in Wedgeport, I will say this, there has been a volunteer who has for many, many years uh uh out of the goodness of his heart, and he wouldn't want me to say his name most likely, uh, done a community service by plowing at times where a plowing was required. So, you know, in some cases, uh, we do the service ourselves, and in other cases, the community has done it uh for itself. So that's more than, more than an answer to the question.
That's good. Thank you. So that was the last one on Facebook Live. Okay. Uh, no in camera tonight, nothing on the agenda. Counselor Dickon, did you want to say something?
Uh, thank you. And the only thing I will say, as far as the volunteers, before the sidewalks in Pumiko were plowed and mowed by the municipality, there was a lot of volunteers that used to keep them open each winter as well and mowed in the summertime. And I see on Facebook Live, our community development officer, just for people that may be wondering, um, something, she put on here something like two-thirds of the marshlands are in southwest Nova Scotia. Two-thirds of the marshlands in Nova Scotia are in southwest Nova Scotia. So.
Interesting.
Be interesting fact.
Say a lot about the mosquito problem, I guess.
Okay, anybody else? Anything else? All right, so we are looking for a motion to adjourn. Well, thank you, Counselor Dickon. Do we have a secondary? Thank you, Counselor Donaldson. All those in fa- in favor signify by raising your hand. I don't think anybody will be contrary. Motion carry. Thank you, everybody.
I think that's the first time I ever move for me to adjourn.